I'd like to call this evening's Subcommittee, the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, to order. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Malvi for some notifications.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. Tonight's Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting was posted not as a meeting of the whole, so therefore, based on open-meeting law, only Subcommittee members may discuss, deliberate, and vote. So we just want the people here with us today and at home watching to know that this is a Subcommittee meeting, and that only the Subcommittee meeting members of this group, which consists of Chair Emily Lebo, Paul Begoli, and Catherine Hubley, will be able to discuss, deliberate, and vote at this Subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
And now, I'd like to ask Ms. Quinn and Ms. Voki to come up and join us.
Good evening, members of the School Committee, Superintendent Malvi, Assistant Superintendent Perkins, and members of the SLT. I'm here this evening with Molly Voki to present on all the amazing things that she's doing with our middle school math teachers and their students.
This is a slide that we used in 2019 when we were presenting to the School Committee after four years of work that was designed with Mattie Roy. You will notice that there are three puzzle pieces to the work that we were doing at that time, and those puzzle pieces are still the foundation of the work that we are doing right now with Building Thinking Classrooms. So we are going to talk about how mindset, rigor, and discourse are a part of the goals that we are working on right now.
So in 2017, Molly and I started working together to continue that vision that she and Mattie had created, and there were three core areas that we worked on that we're still working on today. So again, this is a slide from exactly four years ago today where we talked to you about the fact that we wanted students to be doing the majority of the talking in the classroom, and when teachers were doing the talking, we wanted them to really be purposeful about that. And we did that by way of number talks and purposeful questioning. Those are still being used today, and as we continue the work of Building Thinking Classrooms, we're now including vertical non-permanent whiteboards. And again, all of these new things Molly's going to talk about at length as we go through the presentation. Meeting the needs of all students, that is still our top priority. We did that with differentiating, small group instruction, and now we're including randomized grouping. And then in incorporating rigorous tasks, the teachers learned about three-act math and open middle problems, and what they're learning now is there's so many other ways to really create highly-engaged thinking tasks for their students.
So the work that we have been doing at Southwest Middle School and among many other schools in the district is based on the work of Peter Liliodal, who is a professor at Simon Fraser University in Canada. He was doing research on looking at student thinking, and what he was doing was going around and looking in classrooms all over the United States and Canada, even outside of the country. And what he noticed is that there was a lot of teachers standing and delivering information, and students sitting at desks and taking in that information. And so his research was based on how do we get students to do more thinking? And he looked at this idea of studenting, and that's what students do when they're in a classroom. So a lot of what they do in a classroom is learning, hopefully, but a lot of what they do is other kinds of things like, how do I get my teacher to like me? How do I get good grades? What's going on over there? How do I do my homework? That type of thing. So he looked at studenting and realized that we needed to get students to be talking to one another and up out of their seats. So he explored how all these institutional norms that are what you see in classrooms today were disrupting that thinking. So he did this research over 15 years, and he went into 40 classrooms over those 15 years consistently. And so he realized that there were these 14 factors that would contribute to a thinking classroom, and so we looked at three of those factors that you're going to see in a little bit.
Okay, so we're fortunate to have Molly back this year as a consistent presence, and her plan for this year is broken down into three components. The first was the Professional Day of Learning, where she offered two sessions and introduced those three practices that she's going to talk, I won't get into right now, but she'll talk in more detail about in a little bit. Then she also monthly goes into Southwest, where she facilitates curriculum meetings, and she works one-on-one with the math teachers, planning and co-teaching. And she is also part of our System IPD Day with our middle school teachers, again, introducing them to Building Thinking Classrooms and allowing planning time for them as well.
These are the 14 teaching practices that are a result of Peter Liliodal's research, and we took a pretty hard dive into the first three. These were the practices that were decided were the most impactful in terms of getting students to be, get more students to think more often during class. So those three factors are highly-engaging thinking tasks, visibly randomized grouping, and vertical non-permanent surfaces.
So here are some pictures from that Professional Day of Learning I mentioned earlier. As I mentioned, Molly did two sessions. She had teachers, not just middle school teachers be a part of this, but high school teachers, department heads, principals, and even an assistant principal take part in those sessions as well.
So here's our group that I've been working with since October at Southwest. You can see there's a mix of teachers. We have regular ed teachers, special ed teachers, and even our CARES teacher has been involved. We're going to talk about mimicking versus thinking. So the classroom on the left is a fairly traditional classroom that has desks and rows, the teachers in the front, and this is the opposite of kind of what we're hoping to have students doing in classrooms today. So we want them to look more like the thinking that's happening on the right, where teachers are looking at the same thing, they're talking about what they're seeing, you can see somebody's pointing. And if a teacher were to walk up to that group, you would definitely be able to tell what some of those people are thinking. But if a teacher were to walk around the class on the left, the teacher might not know what kids are thinking even by what they're writing. So we're trying to focus on less mimicking and more thinking, and this gives students an opportunity to share their thoughts. Oh, and we're going to be looking at a video here. What you're going to see here is teachers working with kids and then kind of giving them some direction and then walking away so that kids can be more independent and work in their groups.
Yeah. So what's a number you can write this? Besides, I'm a pencil. Exactly. Make sure your notes are great.
So, do you agree with me? What does this say in here?
It says, uh, three times.
Are you saying that? Ten, one, four.
This blue.
So four? So where do we start? Did you say three times? Yeah. They put that. I'm going to walk away. Yeah, we did. That last group, if you know, you might not have been able to notice, but when the teacher was talking to them, they were speaking in English, and as soon as the teacher walked away, they went back to speaking Spanish. So we're really lucky to be seeing such great progress with REL population at Southwest. So one of the first things that we started working on is highly-engaging thinking tasks. These are very different than mimicking tasks that you might see in a traditional classroom where a teacher gives a worksheet, and it has 20 problems on the worksheet, maybe another problem on the bottom, that's a word problem. These problems are more thought-provoking, they require more conversation, there's no example for students to follow necessarily, so they have to kind of use the knowledge that they have, talk to each other about how to solve these problems. And one of the things that Peter says is if we want our students to think, we need to give them something to think about. And when we stand and tell them what to do, they don't have to do a ton of thinking. What they do is just mimic what we say. So we give them an example, and then they just copy what we do. It doesn't necessarily mean that they understand it, it just means they know how to follow So problem-solving, the understanding that problem-solving is what we do and we don't know what to do. And curriculum tasks in most traditional books are just that, kind of what I just said. When you look in a traditional textbook, there'll be an example or two or three examples, and then it will be followed by practice. And so what we want to do is disrupt that, and Peter found that in his research that kids really can approach problems even when they don't exactly know how to do them and try to get someplace with that problem. And we have been seeing at Southwest that this is the case. So vertical non-permanent surfaces, this is the biggest physical change that you can see in a classroom. Kids are up in groups of three, and they are working together. It's, in the research, it showed that this was the ideal way to get kids to be thinking. So what some of the rules, so to speak, or suggestions from the book are, have only one marker per group. And when kids only have one marker, it forces them to pay attention to what's being written on the board, and we have seen if there is another marker, and somehow those sneaky kids find markers where markers were not given. We see exactly that if there are two markers, there's somebody working over here and somebody working over here, and then there is no communication. So we're working hard on just having one marker, moving the marker around. Sometimes we have to have the rule that the person who's writing cannot write their own thoughts, so they are forced to be a listener and to have a conversation so that they know what to write. Really, this is encouraging a lot of communication, and kids using mathematical vocabulary, and they're communicating on their own level. So what teachers' vocabulary that they use is not always the most understood, even in the beginning when kids are learning a topic, so it's nice for them to work, you know, use their own language. We like to have them in close proximity, so we might have two groups working on this wall right here, and what that does, it allows knowledge mobility. So if a group is working here and they kind of get stuck, they can look over at another group and see what they're doing, and that really allows them to share ideas without even talking between groups, and that has been really helpful. Kids in the beginning think that they're cheating when they're looking at another group, but what we have found is that they really do take like just a tidbit from that group and go back to their group and say, oh, look at what they just did over there. And we can direct them to do that as well. So these vertical non-permanent surfaces are really doing a lot for students. It allows for mistakes to be made when they're non-permanent. If they want, they can erase. It's also encouraging communication. It's, you really have to be thinking, there's no way that you can just be mimicking here. And it's giving everyone a voice. And what we found over time, in the beginning, it was rough. Kids weren't really sure what to do, they weren't sure how to communicate, but at the time when these videos were taped, it was miraculous to see what a change it was since we started in November.
Let's take a look at a video.
Oh, yeah, sorry, we have a video. We have a video.
Of them sharing a marker.
Yeah.
Should we do this one? Whatever you want, it means up to you. I'm just curious where you're going to go. How's it go for this one? Can I ask you, have you written a minute so far?
Yeah.
Can we share them?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Who wants to? So we're going, so we're going to do one tenth?
One tenth? Got it?
One tenth.
I agree. Make sure we're sharing that.
One, two, three, four, five, eight, seven. Eight little tiny buttons now coming. Where are we at? All right, you're good doing it. We got three of those.
Okay, not one. Oh, maybe one? Okay, forget it.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
What's next?
That's it?
Yeah, that's not correct.
These fifth-grade classes were really working on sharing the marker.
So not only is Southwest using these practices, but we're seeing across the district. So the picture here shows Mr. Carson's eighth-grade class. Right after the SystemIPD Day with Molly, he went right back to his classroom with the actual activity that Molly did with the teachers, and did that lesson with his eighth graders. And you can see, he wasn't even ready with, you know, enough vertical whiteboard space for every group, but he, you know, used these handheld whiteboards just to get the kids started with this kind of activity, and had great success with this. And here's Evelyn Tian's seventh-grade class. You can see three groups here working, and like Molly mentioned before, if you look on the right, we have a student that is looking over to the group on the left. And again, this is not only allowed, but encouraged for them to look at other people's thinking, to look at the way that another group might be solving the problem that's different than theirs, and thinking about how it relates to theirs, not just if they, you know, need help, but just what other people are doing and how they're going about the task at hand.
One thing that I think is so impressive about those two teachers is that we had this Professional Day in February, and the very week they went back and did it, and not only did they do it, but then they emailed Kim to tell her about their lesson, super excited about it. So that was really gratifying. So our last practice that we've been working on is visibly randomized grouping. And the research showed that whether strategically grouped or self-selected, 80% of students entered their groups feeling like they were going to be a follower rather than a leader. And Peter translated that as a follower rather than a thinker. So these kids were interviewed in, long before he started actually doing his research, where in classrooms where they were already doing groups. And students really believed that they were put in a group for a reason, and that they knew what their role was. And most of students didn't believe their role was to be the leader. So we're going to show you a video here on one, our sixth-grade teacher randomizing So there's a number of different ways that teachers are using to randomize their groups. Half the teachers are using a randomizer like that, and then other teachers are using cards when they come in, and they just sit in the place where they're supposed to be.
Because it is important that the students realize that it is random, because sometimes with the teachers, when they started this and they would use cards, they still thought the teacher was somehow like making it work a certain way, so they started using the randomizer. That particular one, some days, will flip around a couple more times, and then it kind of showers when it's done, so the students know that it isn't set up ahead of time.
And over time, this has really gotten to be something that's just common practice. The beginning was rough. It was rough, but students have really adapted to it, and we've seen really great benefits. So some of these benefits are the willingness to collaborate, we've 100% seen that, elimination of social barriers. One thing that's really prevalent in grade five is that teachers were starting to see kids talking to kids outside of their group in the hallway, and they were really pleased by that. It was an increased knowledge mobility, so when we talk about knowledge mobility, it's how are we sharing our knowledge throughout the room? Sometimes it's silence, sometimes it's through words. Increased enthusiasm for learning. I can't tell you how many times I've been in a classroom and kids have come in and said, we doing boards today? Sixth grade in particular, I hear that a lot, so that's really nice. And reduced social stress. So one of the things that's really nice about them working in small groups is that they get to test out their ideas with a smaller group of kids. And because they're doing this with random people all the time, they're really getting practice on being confident with their ideas and sharing them with different kids all the time. Another video here. This is a video of me kind of wrapping up one part of the lesson, and what you're going to see here is kids really being super okay with talking about having made a mistake. So show me where that's represented here. Where are your triangular tiles? What kind of tiles is that? So you might have to adjust some things based on the shape of your tile. What was the hardest part for you when you got started? What do you think? Jen?
Well, Joe, we got confused with multiplying this.
Can you tell me what those numbers are?
Two, two and four.
Two and four?
So we first multiply four to 24, and we kind of realized that we were supposed to like divide 348 by 4.
Okay, so you had to divide. How many people divided 348 by 4? Did you know to do that right away? Did this work? Know to do this right away?
No.
No, what happened there?
So we did, at first, we got it wrong because we did eight divided by 348.
You did 348 divided by eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you forgot about what?
Forgot about...
What was the shape of the tile?
Yeah, well, it's not a square, it's a triangle.
It's not a square, it's a triangle. So why do we have to divide by 2 when it's a triangle?
Because you're just splitting it in half.
You're splitting what in half?
You're splitting a square in half.
A square in half, or what else? What other kind of shape can be split in half to create a triangle? One thing that I think has been really beneficial is that kids are starting to see that when they make a mistake or go down a wrong path, it's part of the learning process, versus being afraid to make a mistake and publicly talk about that. So you can see how easy it was for kids to talk about, you know, having gone down the wrong path, and then correcting themselves and realizing what the actual algorithm was.
And then owning that.
Right, yeah.
So we had to go ahead and ask the students how they were thinking about all of this. And in fifth grade, we had some students say, I like it because my handwriting's getting better. They love writing with those expo markers on the whiteboard. And I just like it because I am learning. In sixth grade, it's easier to communicate their finding, and it's more fun. You get to share ideas. And if you look at this picture, you can see this is from a sweets class, and on this particular day, she actually let them use the windows as their non-permanent vertical white space to be writing on. So they're doing their math right there to change it up a bit. Seventh grade, we get to work with our friends, and it makes it more enjoyable and not boring. That's a great thing to say about math class. And then our final slide, we couldn't have asked for a better response with the eighth graders. They like the independence of working in groups like this, and it's fun, and it helps to work in a group so that they can, your fellow members can help you. So that concludes our presentation at this time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Miss Hubley.
Great presentation. It was wonderful. Thanks. The excitement, you guys. I just have one question. Well, how often is the group learning work being done? And I'm a firm believer in that all students learn differently. How are you having access to getting...
Are you not? Oh, now nobody's on.
Thank you. Wonderful job. I can see the enthusiasm that you both have. And so I was saying, so how often is the group work being done, the group work being done, and also on the other side of that all students learn differently? How are students having the opportunity to have independent thought work as well as individuals?
So different classrooms are doing different levels of this, so there's a very strong commitment with the fifth and sixth grade. They're doing it almost every day, if not every day. They don't do it for the entire class period necessarily, so there is time for students to, there's always some kind of class opener, so there's some time there where they might be working independently. And also, in the seventh and eighth grade, they're not doing it every single day, so there is time for individualized learning and group work of other kinds as well. Really, as we're getting more used to doing this, you can really morph it into however you want it to work for your classroom. And what we were starting to see during our lesson planning was that, you know, here's the topic that we need to teach today, and we kind of looked at that topic and decided, well, where is it best to have group work? And we would do the group work for that particular piece, and sometimes we would send them back to their seat and have them do individualized work or work in partners. So that's kind of working itself out over time.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Begoli?
So this gentleman had...
Just a minute, Mr. Begoli. There you go.
So this gentleman who did the research used 40 classrooms as his basis of...
Forty classrooms over, yes. I mean, he's seen a million classrooms, but the research that was done in order to come up with these 14 practices were 40 K to 12 classrooms in the United States and Canada. So he consistently went to those classrooms for 15 years.
I don't think that's enough, but that's my opinion. I found that if kids had to teach something, that they learned it much more quickly. Is there any way that kids can do this in this particular...
Yeah, I would say that that's a pretty big concept with this, because even though they're only working in groups of three, there's always somebody who's kind of doing a little bit of the leading of the group. And so I don't think that that's the entire premise of what they're doing in the group, but it certainly is part of the group work.
Yeah, because if you want everybody to try to be a leader, it makes them be a leader if they have to teach it.
Yeah.
And then they have to understand it.
Thank you. Wonderful job. I can see the enthusiasm that you both have. And so I was saying, so how often is the group work being done? The group work being done and also on the other side of that all students learn differently? How are students having the opportunity to have independent thought work as well as individuals?
So different classrooms are doing different levels of this. So there's a very strong commitment with the fifth and sixth grade. They're doing it almost every day, if not every day. They don't do it for the entire class period necessarily. So there is time for students to, there's always some kind of class opener. So there's some time there where they might be working independently. And also in the seventh and eighth grade, they're not doing it every single day. So there is time for individualized learning and group work of other kinds as well. Really, as we're getting more used to doing this, you can really morph it into however you want it to work for your classroom. And what we were starting to see during our lesson planning was that, you know, here's the topic that we need to teach today and we kind of looked at that topic and decided, well, where is it best to have group work? And we would do the group work for that particular piece. And sometimes we would send them back to their seat and have them do individualized work or work in partners. So that's kind of working itself out over time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Foley? Just a minute, Mr. Foley. There you go.
So this gentleman who did the research used forty classrooms as his basis of...
Forty classrooms over, yes. I mean, he's seen a million classrooms, but the research that was done in order to come up with these fourteen practices were forty K to twelve classrooms in the United States and Canada. So he consistently went to those classrooms for fifteen years.
I don't think that's enough, but that's my opinion. I found that if kids had to teach something, that they learned it much more quickly. Is there any way that kids can do this in this particular...
Yeah, I would say that that's a pretty big concept with this because even though they're only working in groups of three, there's always somebody who's kind of doing a little bit of the leading of the group. And so I don't think that that's the entire premise of what they're doing in the group, but it certainly is part of the group work.
Yeah, because if you want everybody to try to be a leader, it makes them be a leader if they have to teach it.
Yeah.
And then they have to understand it and then have to be able to share their knowledge with their group.
Yeah, so one of the things that we will continue to work on next year, and we've talked about it a little bit with teachers so far, is that having, making sure that everybody in the group knows what's going on is kind of where we are right now. Because in the beginning, what they do is, you know, the natural leader in the group will just do all the work and everybody will sit there and watch, just like you've all experienced in group work yourself. But as we started to talk more about group work and we started to create some rubrics about what does group work look like? What is, how does it feel best for you? We started to talk about, you know, making sure that everybody knows what's going on. And so that if the teacher comes up, everyone can answer the question that's being asked by the teacher. So that's something that's coming along with time.
Yeah, I mean, kids in classrooms don't want to take risks because they don't want to fail.
True enough.
And they don't want to fail in front of their peers. So I think the small groups is a great idea. But I'd like to see more individual onus put on each kid to teach something so that they can really, really understand what they're speaking about. And then share it with their classmates.
With time, with time.
Thank you, Ms. Foley. I have one comment. I had a question about the randomized, randomized groups, but you cleared that up for me pretty quickly with your presentation. So this is linked to the standards. I'm sure the teachers are teaching the standards and this is just another method of teaching it. So we're getting the standards. That's a big concern, but I am, it looks great. I think that most teachers, not just math, could probably use it. It just looks like a great idea. It really does look like a great idea. I love to see the kids changing. I think the person who sold him the marker thing is a good idea. That would help with the natural leaders. You know, you can't, you can't do it if you're, you can't write it if it's your idea. So I think that's great. I loved it. It looks very exciting to me. Looks, I'm glad to see that other teachers are using it besides Southwest. So I want to thank you very much for the presentation. Are we good? We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to invite Mr. Marani and Ms. Foley to talk about the civics, MCAS civics pilot update.
Everybody awake?
No.
Good evening, everybody. Once again, thank you for your time tonight just to receive another update on assessments. In particular, tonight, we're going to go over the grade eight civics field test. I've included this in a few updates in previous weeks. However, just to give you a picture of what the structure of the tests, both sessions look like and what those questions look like, it makes sense tonight to share some of the updates with you thus far. So I want to thank Ms. Foley. She's, as many of you know, the assistant principal over at Southwest Middle School. However, she's also, a lot of people may not be aware of this, but she's our middle school instructional team lead for social studies. So she plays a pivotal role in the professional development process and just the coordination of curriculum across social studies at the middle school level. So without her support, I don't think the team would be as far along as they are today if not for Ms. Foley. So it's a privilege to be presenting alongside her tonight. I just want to remind everybody, all five middle schools have been designated by the Department of Ed to have our students participate in the civics field test which takes place this year. It's a minimum 50% of the eighth grade students at each school. This is similar, this presentation is going to be similar to the STE Expanded Pilot where ultimately, we're just trying to take a deep dive into this exam so that anybody watching, each one of you can see what our students will encounter when they take this exam on and also what our teachers are doing to prepare their students for this exam. So we're going to look at the general design overview, which includes test structure, different reporting categories, the components of each session. So session one is going to be the state level performance task. I'll go into that momentarily. And then session two is the end of course test, which is more of a broader end of year assessment. Ms. Foley will then be offering a more detailed view of the specific questions, samples of what the students will encounter. So you can see, as I refer to, for example, technology enhanced questions, you'll be able to see what some of those look like. Again, just to have a reference to know what our students are encountering, you know, in the next couple of months. Also, we'll go over the testing timeline, not just where we are right now, but where we were, where we've been, and then where we're going. We'll look at when it becomes operational as well. And finally, just the resources and actions that we've utilized and taken thus far to prepare staff and students for this field test. So when we look at the test design and development, the ultimate goal of the assessment is to measure a student's civics content knowledge, their skills to explain and describe civic based concepts, support claims with evidence, and also analyze the sources of that evidence to ensure that it's credible. That's a very important skill that we want our students to feel confident in so that when they support their position, whatever it may be, they can feel confident that their information that they're using is accurate and effective. As I mentioned, we have the state level performance task, which is session one, and of course, test is session two. Both sessions will cover all reporting categories that I'll share with you in this slide and the next slide. However, session one, you'll notice, is much more targeted as far as what is being assessed in terms of the topics within the framework. So the first reporting category is the content. Essentially, what we're assessing in that case is the student knowledge of the frameworks, of the eighth grade frameworks. So there are seven topics within the frameworks for eighth grade students, but they're consolidated into three primary components. The first is foundations and development of the US political system and government. That covers topics one and two within the frameworks. Institutions and structure of the US government and the mass state and local governments, that's topics three and six. And by the way, I will have the list shared of the different topics. And then the rights and responsibilities, the US Constitution, and news and media literacy, topics four, five, and seven. So those will be assessed throughout both sessions. However, one, session one, will be far more targeted and session two will encompass all of those. The second reporting category is the standards of practice within history and social sciences. So this essentially, if we look at the first reporting category as the content, then the next aspect is the skills. What can they do with said content? And so those are broken down into, you know, demonstrating their actual civic knowledge, so being able to communicate what they know. Also, understanding how to answer civics based questions and solve related problems, analyzing different points of view, and as I mentioned before, assessing credibility from the sources. And then using those credible sources to justify their reasoning and use evidence to support their positions. And so now, when we go a little bit further into the state level performance task, that's session one, as you can see, there are seven particular topics. These topics are pulled directly from the frameworks. And this year, schools have been assigned a particular topic. If you look at that bottom bullet, what is likely going to happen when this becomes an operational test is it will be the same topic throughout the state. So it won't be a different topic, school to school to school. However, for this field test, it will be a different topic. So as you, it's a little small, so it might be hard to see, but Broad Meadows has been assigned topic two, which is the development of the United States government. Central and Southwest has been assigned topic three, which is the institutions of the United States government. Atlantic, topic four, with rights and responsibilities of citizens. And Point Webster, topic five, the Constitution amendments and Supreme Court decisions. So for session one, those topics for each school is all they're going to focus in on. Now regardless of the topic, they were all comprised of fourteen points. So whatever topic they're encountering, it's going to be built in the same way. And that means there's three one-point constructive response questions, one four-point constructive response question, and seven one-point selective response, which that could include standard multiple choice. You'll also see in some of the samples that Ms. Foley shares with you, it's multiple choice, but done in a less than traditional way. So you'll see kind of the different ways they offer multiple choice questions, also multiple select, and as I mentioned, technology enhanced items. The expected duration of this session should be roughly forty-five to fifty minutes for students taking the assessment. And as I mentioned, that's fourteen total points. So then when we look at session two, the end of course test, this covers all of the civic standards. So those seven topics that you saw on the last slide, this could cover, these questions could come from any one of those topics, all of those topics. There will be a total of thirty-six points. The duration is roughly fifty to sixty minutes, so a little bit longer than session one. And it will be comprised of multiple choice, multiple select, technology enhanced questions. And we also want to point out that many of the questions our students will encounter will prompt them to review a source of information and pull evidence from that source of information. So yes, they'll have to connect prior knowledge that they've learned in the classroom, but they won't necessarily just have to pull facts out from their own mind. They'll have evidence and be able to pull facts from that evidence to then support a particular answer. So to take a, just to drill down a little bit deeper into the actual questions, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Foley.
Thank you, Mr. Marani. And thank you for letting me have the opportunity to talk about the test. This might be a strange statement, but the history teacher in me is actually really excited about the way this, not necessarily the test itself, but the way the test is written. Because I think it speaks so much to what we've been working on in our middle school level PD anyways, which is that yes, you know, history or your content area in social studies is your, that's, you know, what draws the kids in. That's the information. But really what you should be targeting in your social studies classroom is the skills that students need across the board. And so it's higher level thinking skills of analyzing, applying, making an argument, supporting an argument, digging deep into a text. It's those close reading skills. It's, you know, that critical, those critical thinking skills. And we've been working a lot on that in our social studies PDs for the last few years. And this test really kind of lives there. Like it's very, very similar to what we've been targeting in our PDs. So what is on the screen right now is an example, a sample from the state level performance task. So again, like Mr. Marani said, this will be the first thing the students do. So the state level performance task has to be given first. And it's a combination of multiple choice, multiple select, and then constructive responses. This particular question that you have on the screen is, it relates to topic two, which is the foundations of US government. Specifically, it focuses on the Articles of Confederation. And what it, what this particular portion of it does is, you know, it's a text for the students to read. They need to understand text. This one happens to be a letter where someone is writing, kind of identifying, you know, some weaknesses in the Articles of Confederation. And then from that text, plus the background knowledge they've learned from their year of civics education, they need to kind of answer these questions. And the, you know, the first question you see there is a very basic multiple choice, a text dependent question. The answer, you know, they do need their background knowledge in civics, but the answer is really in the text if they take the time to read it and to analyze it. They also have a technology enhanced question, which has them dragging and dropping. So they have a flow chart there and they'll have some boxes at the top and they just need to, you know, drag them down and put them in the correct order on the flow chart. And then the final question there is a multiple select. So they have multiple different answers. It's actually asking to compare the Virginia and New Jersey plans. So they'll be checking in the boxes which of those criteria fit with Virginia, New Jersey, or both. And again, the good thing about this is it's not what you think of when you think of a history test, which is, you know, facts and figures and names and dates. Yes, they need the background knowledge of civics, but they're applying that to something. They're not, it's, this test is not based on memorization. The more they know, the stronger their civic education has been, the easier the test will be. But they also have these sources to refer back to. So, you know, they have those supports built into the test. In addition to the multiple choice, multiple select, there also are the constructive responses. So this first one is pretty straightforward. This is a one-point constructive response. It's the same source. That's the other thing that I think is a benefit of this test is that they get to work with the same, excuse me, the same source multiple times. So they really are digging into this one source. So rather than reading, you know, a lot of things and, you know, having to manipulate a lot of information, they're doing a deep dive into one particular source. So again, still the same topic, still the same letter, the Articles of Confederation. And what they're doing in this constructive response is they're identifying a weakness of the Articles of Confederation. This is something they certainly should have covered in their civics class, but again, if they're not completely remembering, it's something that comes at the very beginning of the year, the source really will point them in that direction. So it's synthesizing what they've learned with what they're given. And they're, you know, writing a constructive response, identifying weakness, and then supporting it with evidence from the text, which is a skill we practice across the curriculum. So it really lets them practice those higher level thinking skills. And as they move on, so now, again, same topic, still focusing on the Articles of Confederation. Now we're moving into the four-point constructive responses and it's kind of layering. So it's kind of, in the beginning, you've got your multiple choice, right? And that's familiar and that's a little bit safe. And then you're moving on to your one-point constructive response. You're digging a little bit deeper. And now we're getting to the four-point constructive responses and this is where like you really see the students having to dig in because now they've got layered text. So it's still the same source they've been working on, but there's two additional texts to go with it now. And each of those questions that you see off to the side is asking them to work with one or more of the sources to draw comparisons, to draw conclusions. And then ultimately, in the final, in the last of those questions, they're making a claim about the Articles of Confederation and supporting it with everything they've done. So the test builds on itself and the sources build on themselves. And it really has students like thinking and using text evidence and making a claim and supporting it with what's in the test, within the source, excuse me. Once they finish that portion, the next session is the end of course test. And it's actually very similar in that in every single question, the students are given a source to work with. So these might not be heavy in the reading. It could be, you can see there, it's a, it's a graphic. And then the questions will relate to that graphic. It might be a political cartoon. It could be a chart. It could be a graph. It could be a short reading. It could be a quote. And the questions they're answering are related to that. So every question has that source, that text, that document to refer back to, even on the end of course test. And again, you see, we've got the drag and drop. That one's asking the students to take the three branches, the institutions of US government and drag them to the correct branch. The one that's in the middle there is a varied multiple choice format. They're working with that text. They're manipulating the text, kind of like a fill in the blank, but, you know, a technology enhanced version of that. And then again, there'll be the standard multiple choice. But again, the thing I really like about this test design, and I think that's going to benefit our learners, is that in every question, there is that support of the source. And they're not all, there's a lot of reading on it, but some of them are also pictures. Some of them are also graphs and charts. So it does speak to a variety of different, you know, strengths that the students might have. So this slide kind of shows you where we've been and where we are now and where we're going. So it's obviously been an ongoing process, the creation of this test and the piloting. You can see at the bottom, we are now in twenty-three, twenty-four. We're at the field test. This year, 50% of students at each, a minimum of 50% of students at each middle school will take the test. So it does not have to be 100% of the eighth grade. It has to be 50% of students taking civics. And so 50% minimum, and that shows not random. They'll take the test. And then next year, sorry, and then also in this year, the reporting is just state and, sorry, district and school level data. There will not be any student level data reported this year. Next year, the test goes operational and that's when we'll see all students taking it as well as student level data being reported back as well. And I know different schools are doing it differently in terms of the percentage of students taking the test, but the threshold here is that 50% minimum. So we've done a lot to get ready for this test this year. It really has been the focus of our professional development at the middle school level this year, as well as, I can speak for Southwest, of our vertical teams. So the state has provided, you know, resources to help get ready. The first of those is what they're calling local level tasks. So for each of the seven standards, they've created one performance task and it's available on the website. And it's, they're not mandatory, but they're there for teachers to use so that when students come, you know, in a couple months or a few, really two months, and they sit to take this test, if their teachers have used these, they're going to be familiar with the format of the performance task. They can be given, you know, as an assessment in your class. They don't have to be graded. They're not being graded by DZ. It'd be graded by the teacher if they choose to give them. They also, they're a little bit more expanded than what they'll see because they include group work. So they give it to the students a chance to collaborate and kind of like wrestle with these tasks together. And again, DZ is not collecting them. It's for the teacher's own use. And then there's also a variety of practice tests available on the website, both a paper based and a computer based. And the computer based... And the computer-based one, you know, is very, it has those very, is very similar to what the students will see when they take the actual test. And then in terms of kind of what we've done with that for our professional development, in our professional moment this year, we kind of started the conversation of, our eighth graders will be the ones taking tests. That's where the test, you know, is right now, but what can we do in grade six and seven to take the burden off of the eighth-grade teachers a tiny bit and the students a tiny bit, so that when they get there, they're comfortable with the test format, they're comfortable with what they need to do? So one thing we did this year, you know, in preparation, is we had the sixth and seventh grade teachers analyze the local-level tasks, really dig into them, talk about what skills the students need to answer these, what can I teach in my classroom that will help them to be able to attack these tasks. And then each sixth and seventh grade teacher designed their own local-level task for their own content area. So the sixth grade, it could have been ancient Egypt or Mesopotamia, the seventh grade, it might have been Greece or Rome. So they created their own local-level task. They've given those in their classroom, and when we meet again, we're going to talk about, like, how did that go? What can we do? You know, did it work well? Do you think this was helpful? We also started the conversation about the assessments we give regularly in social studies. So could we make the assessments we give, at least in part, look more like the civics test? Again, if it's in sixth grade, it's going to be on ancient civilizations, but can they use the technology-enhanced questions? Can they provide students with sources on their test? Can they have them doing more analysis and less memorization and less recall? And then at Southwest, in our last vertical team meeting, we started talking specifically about, should each year have an end-of-course test? You know, not obviously a standardized one, but, you know, if I'm the seventh-grade social studies teacher, would it benefit my students to have an end-of-course test similar to the civics one at the end of seventh grade, so that when they get to eighth grade, it's very, very familiar and very comfortable for them? So it really has been the focus of our PD this year, to, you know, what can we do? And then the other piece of that, too, is looking at the standards for grade six and seven and seeing, is there anything in them that are going to, that might show up in civics? For example, when you're teaching ancient Greece, you're teaching about the foundations of democracy. When you're teaching ancient Rome, you're teaching about the beginnings of representative government. So, you know, can we put more emphasis on those in sixth and seventh grade, so that, you know, when they get to eighth grade, we know democracy, we've got that. Now we should talk about what it looks like in the United States. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at, and it's going to be exciting to see how it goes.
So with that, that enthusiastic viewpoint, which I, I can, I assume you all see why she's the middle-school teacher-team leader there for social studies teacher, but I open it up to any questions or comments that you may have.
Mrs. Hoobley.
Thank you. Yes, a lot of excitement there. So what is the timeframe for the test to be administered, and when do you estimate the results would be coming back?
So the civics testing window is from April 29th to June 7th. So it, it comes down to each building's MCAS schedule. So we're working, we're prioritizing the other MCAS first. So we're working around that, and that's why it might vary within each school. However, that's, that's the window. Quite honestly, I don't know when we'll get the, any of the data. I would assume, just because of the other data, we typically get something in the summer, you know, raw data. I don't know exactly what it will look like in terms of what, what reports we'll gain access to, what information we'll have. But my guess would be we'll start getting information probably late summer.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Marani.
I'm just glad that you're teaching civics. I think it's so important.
Yeah.
Particularly if people are going to be, you know, voting when they're eighteen.
Yeah.
They need to know what is going on and what, how their, how their votes impact our government. Is there anything about local government in here?
Oh, yeah.
There is?
Yep. Yep.
Standard five is Massachusetts State and Local Government, so it's, like, pretty comprehensive into what our state government, and then our local government as well. And that's also a big component of the civics project that the students work on, is working with their local government.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marani. I just want to say, I have to agree about, I've known Sue Foley for a long time, one of the best social studies teachers I've ever seen. So I can imagine how well she's doing with this. I agree with Mr. Marani, I am thrilled to see civics being taught. I was never taught civics, and some of the stuff is still foreign to me, so I'm really thrilled about it. It's interesting that they're going to teach them accurate and effective information, how to, how to prove it's accurate and effective information, and news and media literacy. We should bring everybody in the country back to that.
That's right.
Because nobody really knows what they're looking at anymore, so.
That's right.
If we can get that to those kids early enough, so that they really can discern that as they.
Absolutely.
Grow into citizens, it would be really a wonderful thing. So I'm thrilled about it.
Yeah.
I, I, thank you very much, it's great. I'm excited to see how it goes.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I feel I have to add is that we are concerned about the overload testing for our eighth graders. That was brought up at the main meeting, and we have a lot of concerns about that. Early college high school update.
Thank you, Mrs. Leibon. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, Ms. Perkins and I will briefly share some highlights of Quincy's Early College High School pathway. Before I begin, I'd just like to acknowledge Megan behind me, Megan Jovanouni of Quincy College, the Vice President of Student Success and Partnerships. So thank you, Megan, for being here this evening and for your extreme, exceptional leadership. I really do appreciate it, and it's great working with Megan, it really is. Our first element of Quincy Evening High School is enrollment. We currently have two-hundred-and-forty students enrolled in Quincy Evening High School, one-hundred-and-twenty students are enrolled at North Quincy High School, and one-hundred-and-nineteen at Quincy High School. That's an increase of thirty-six students from the previous year. So we're heading towards our goal of two-fifty very, very soon, hopefully in the coming, coming year. And in regards to demographics, in particular special populations, fifty-seven percent of our students are low-income, eighteen percent are special education, and six percent are English learners. Fifty-seven percent are female students, females, and forty-three percent are males. Forty-four percent are first, are students of first generation. And thirty-six percent are students in our vocational programs. That's about eighty-seven students in general. We're pleased to share that we are expanding our early college program to grade-nine students in the fall, allowing fifty students, twenty-five from North and twenty-five from Quincy High. The application process is ongoing currently. The two programs that will be offered, the two courses, if you will, will be offered in the fall for grade-nine is Introduction to Early College Pathway. That's Semester One, and Introduction to Computer Science, Semester Two. Students that take the first course in the preparation for the rigorous coursework that comes with Early College Pathway. Topics would include study skills, time management, organizational skills, as well as, as well as critical thinking. Students would receive no college credit for the first course, but will receive two-point-five Quincy Public Schools credit. If they do well in this course second semester, they'll be able to join that second course, Introduction to Computer Science, where that will be a three-college-credit course, as well as a two-point-five QPS credit. Credits earned. If, in grade, in grade nine, you can earn up to three credits. Grade ten, you could earn six credits. Grade eleven, you can earn seven credits, and grade twelve, you can earn up to nine credits. A total of twenty-five minimum credits, college credits, that is, in our, in our program. Students must earn seventy-three, a C or better, to earn those credits. And additional, additional opportunities are also available for our students if they may enroll in dual enrollment, as well as Summer Academy, to earn themselves additional Quincy's Early College Parent Advisory Team. This team was established in the fall of two thousand twenty-two. An opportunity for, for current and future early college parents to, to connect, share program insights, assist in coordinating events, provide recommendations, and contribute to the early college program, as well as the QPS community. There are currently eight parents involved in our program today. There are four, we, we hold four meetings a year. They are virtual, and they are facilitated by Eli Stewart. Eli is our transition coach at Quincy High, and he does a great job facilitating these meetings with parents virtually. The parent advisory team goals include to increase team membership and create engagement opportunities, raise awareness of Quincy's Early College Pathway program at both high schools. We offer a series of parent advisory team events, initiatives that include parent academies, a student orientation, where parents are on a panel, parents talking to parents. It's really great, great to see that, and help market and promote, and answer questions that maybe other parents may have with students joining the program for the first time. We offer a variety of early college workshops, including FASA and How to Pay for College. This past Monday, twenty-one parents participated in the How to Pay for College workshop. It was tremendous. Topics included foster overview, scholarships, student loans, merit aid, grants, and financial aid. It really was a great way for parents to learn some tips and tricks and strategies on how to pay for college beyond high school. And they had some great questions as well. Quincy's Early College Third Annual Symposium was held on February 10th. Many of you attended, and we appreciate that for taking the morning. It certainly was a great event. The Symposium was a perfect opportunity to celebrate and reflect on Quincy's third year of early college high school, of which we've had made tremendous progress thus far. During the event, we acknowledged and recognized Quincy's Early College Pathway partners and key stakeholders, including Mayor Koch, Ron Mariano, Speaker of the House, Dr. Patrick Totweiler, Massachusetts Secretary of Education, Jeffrey Riley, the Commissioner of Education, and Joan Cristel, President of State Street Foundation, and many others, of course. Each early college students had the opportunity to participate in a variety of interactive leadership workshops designed to support their college experience, as well as had the opportunity to meet early college alumni. Our staff participated in professional development all day, and were trained in training developed by our ITI International, our early college consultants. A wonderful day was had by all. Quincy's Early College Pathway Scholarship Opportunity. Quincy College will once again offer our current Early College Pathway grade-twelve students a one-year, a one-year full tuition scholarship to Quincy College for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic school year. The Quincy College Scholarship will provide up to twenty-four college credits, fees, textbooks in the academic, for the academic year, and the approximate value is ten thousand two-hundred. Quincy's Early College Summer Academy will, will return for the second year, available to early college students of incoming grades ten, eleven, and twelve, as well as graduating seniors. Students may earn three, four, or even six college credits. Early College Summer Academy will begin on July 8th. Courses either run five weeks or seven weeks, and they include public speaking, introduction to computers, foundations of business, website design, introduction to programming, general sociology, nutrition, precalculus, introduction to biotechnology, and forensic science. Tuition, fees, textbooks, snacks, Charlie cards are all free to our students. As you recall, I believe last year we had one-hundred-and-eighty-two students that participated, and we hope to exceed that number this year. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Perkins.
So I am here to talk about a really exciting opportunity that we are exploring with Quincy College to expand our partnership for early college. So Mr. Sagala and Megan and, and I have been meeting with Dr. DiChristofaro in talking about the possibility that we could look at, for our low-income students, free of cost, to our students, putting together, starting with our freshmen in early college, a small pilot group of students between, you know, around fifteen students at each high school, to put together a series of courses that would end with them graduating with an associate's degree, free of charge to our students. So we are extremely excited about that opportunity. We're in initial discussion, so we're just here to share that this is something we're talking about, something we're exploring, and something we think actually might be a real possibility for our students. Right now, we were, we're looking to potentially start this in January of next year, if, if we were to start it. It would also incorporate the summer courses that Mr. Sagala talked about, which is how we would get our students to that associate-level, you know, status. But we're really excited about it. We'll have, we'll present more on it as we have more details, but it is something that we're exploring for a small subset of students right now that we think really could do this and would be really successful and be, you know, hugely beneficial to have students graduating with an associate's degree, that the amount that that would save students in terms of college would be just amazing. So something we're looking at, you know, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Hoobley.
All wonderful. Thank you so much. So Erin, do we have any idea what the associate's degree would be in?
It would be a liberal arts.
Yep. And the, is there a criteria for getting the, the one-year scholarship to Quincy College for the kids?
As long as you participate in the program.
That's the only criteria?
That's it.
Okay. And do you find that the credits that they receive going in through the early college program, are they able to be transferred anywhere without issue, or are there, are you having any issues?
So far, we've had no issues. Miss.
Yeah, happy to.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see all of you. So in terms of the credits, the early college credits that students earn, we, as Mr. Sagala said, we have not had issues with the three years that we've had the program in existence, but we do always share that, at the end of the day, it's always up to the school that the student transfers to, for them to determine how the Quincy College credits are applied. So, for example, a, a science class maybe that they took as part of the early college program, if that student is deciding to pursue a science-based program, a study at, say, a four-year school that is not Quincy College, that school could say, we still want you to take our version of environmental studies, and this will be used as an elective. So at the end of the day, it is always up to that school, but we haven't had issues with it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no.
I'm good.
Mr.
Is the FASR scholarship workshop for both Quincy and North Quincy High School students?
Yes, it is, Mr. Marani.
Okay. And it'd be nice if Department of Education would acknowledge or see all the great stuff we're doing, instead of cutting nine million dollars from us next year to supplement us and give us what we deserve.
I agree. Agreed.
So to that point, the governor is increasing the early college high school line significantly for next year. So the support will be coming to the colleges to provide those services for us, so that money is going up. I think it goes to the college, doesn't it, the money?
Some of it does, and then districts will get it as well.
Some of it goes to the system. But it's just, so that line, like, dual enrollment is going down, but early college high school is going up, so that's exciting. I went to the symposium, asked several of my colleagues, and it was an amazing thing to see. There was actually a young lady who was a CTE student, who was getting her CNA, who has also had already thirty-three credits and has been accepted into nursing school. So, I mean, that's incredible. It really is incredible for, for that student. I really like the idea. I'm glad that there's a, there's a major in the associate degree. One of the things that I find a little wobbly about dual enrollment and early college high schools, it's not necessarily cohesive courses that get you to what you might want to do. It's not like English one, well, some of it is now, English one oh one, English one two. So the more of that I see, the happier I am, because everybody has to take those things. And so I really love to see those courses being offered in early college high school. I think that opportunity for kids to, or in other places of doing that, there isn't any reason why our kids can't do it.
Right.
And especially if the, if the courses are going to be cohesive and lead to, a degree in liberal arts is fine with me. It really is. That just means you can do the work, and you can go on and do anything else after that, so.
Right.
It's perfectly fine with me. I'm very excited about it. What, what does ITI do for you?
RTI?
RTI?
RTI. RTI International. Don't ask me what that stands for. But they are a huge support of, of us. They provide guidance, they provide funding, a bit of funding, and professional development training. We go to North Carolina for site visits, and they have a summit in June that we'll be attending, a national summit for all early college.
Nice.
They pay for that. So it's a good thing.
So you're a consultant that you don't have to pay for? They pay?
That's right. That's right.
Nice.
Thanks to State Street. State Street pays them, actually.
That's really, that's good to hear. Now, I think it's, the symposium was impressive to hear from the panel of students and to see the pride on those parents' faces when they taught, when their students were speaking. It was amazing. It was just, really was amazing to see the pride and the happiness on the parents', and they were so impressed with their kids, as they should have been, as they should have been. So it was really, it was a joy to see. So thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item on the agenda is the superintendent's goals for this school year. We've had these before us before, and we went through them, and we were, we were fine with these goals, but I did ask the superintendent to amend them and add one when I saw the chronic absenteeism issue at the school improvement plans. And so that delayed this coming out, but this, that last, that last inclusion is in there. It's the, is it the last page?
Number four.
Number four. Second to the last page of page 12. And so this is the only change from what you've seen before, and this is just making a goal around chronic absenteeism and what they're doing about it. So we went through this with us before, but I just wanted to make sure it was in the goals, too. So there really is not a lot here that's different. I just wanted you to see that. So I think we should now vote to approve these goals.
Motion to approve, to move, we have to move it to the main.
By Mr. Bargoli. All in favor? I.
I think it has to be a roll call, actually.
Oh, it does? Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Bargoli.
Yes.
Ms. Hublin.
Yes.
Thank you.
And now we can adjourn. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the March 27th meeting of the Policy Subcommittee, the Quincy City Council. We have a quorum.
School committee.
A school committee, yeah. Excuse me, school committee. We have, we have a quorum with myself, Mrs. Cahill, and Mrs. Lebo as the Subcommittee members. I yield to the Superintendent, who wants to make a statement.
Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Gattro. Just a reminder to our audience here tonight and everyone watching at home, the Subcommittee meeting is not a meeting of the whole school committee. Therefore, per open meeting law, only Subcommittee members may discuss, deliberate, and vote. The Subcommittee members for tonight's Policy Subcommittee include the Chair, Mr. Gattro, Mrs. Cahill, and Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We have a number of items to review proposed update of selected health policies. Mrs. Hure.
Welcome. Good to have you here. The floor is yours. You can walk us through.
Thank you. Sure. Okay, so we're going to start with, well, first of all, thank you for having me. We're going to start with section 7.5.2, the School-Based Public Access Defibrillation Program. I'm looking to move this out of policy and make it a protocol or procedure. When looking through, for all of these policies, I went on the MASK website and was really looking through and researching what they have as far as policies. Did not see anything as far as this in policy anywhere, but I don't want it to disappear. It definitely needs to be in a procedure. Okay? And it's, our procedure should remain basically what our policy is stating with an update to some of our forms, so that they're more up-to-date with what we're doing right now. We have a life support systems that is coming and servicing our AEDs now. I believe we have 35 AEDs through the school district, and they are being serviced twice a year by life support AEDs. I'm very happy that they're doing it. We have discovered that, you know, some of the batteries were not the proper batteries. We didn't know, we're not, you know, machinists. So I'm glad that's happening. They're keeping software on the AEDs updated. If an AED gets used, they'll provide us with a replacement, temporary replacement AED while the used one is being downloaded and processed.
We, we don't have that section in front of us. Do you have it with you?
The...
7.5.2?
You don't have it.
Oh, did you say three or two? Were you talking about the one to be removed?
It's the first one here on this agenda.
7.5.2. Is that accurate?
Yeah, no, that's what she's talking about, too. I didn't give you a copy of it since she was suggesting, since we were suggesting it to be removed.
To be removed, yeah.
It's, it's a very long policy to have in there, and it really, what it does is it spells out, what does the school coordinator do? What does the EMS advisor do? What does the, let's see, medical director do? It's just very specific as far as procedure and protocol. So I thought it would be best served as a procedure.
Questions?
I don't have a question.
Do you have any questions?
So basically, so...
Let me put that on.
... non-action.
Correct.
And it could change. The procedures could change with time, you know, next year, new, new equipment, whatever.
Absolutely.
So, so that's why you think we should take it out?
Yes.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to strike it?
Yes, you do.
Yes. Is there a motion to strike from the Policy Book?
Motion.
Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. Do we need a roll call or a voice?
A roll call. Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next item is section 7.5.3, which is currently labeled Heimlich Maneuver CPR Training Abdominal Thrusts. I'm asking that we remove the term Heimlich maneuver, as it's no longer condoned by Dr. Heimlich. It is now, the updated term is abdominal thrusts. So thereby naming this CPR Training Abdominal Thrusts. I'm asking that we just strike that out in the first paragraph. The addition of all coaches having current certification in cardiopulmonary resuscitation from the American Heart Association, Red Cross, or other agency or organization approved by the Department of Public Health, and this requirement shall not apply to a coach with a physical disability. This terminology is, is coming from the MASK policy that I was reading. Quincy Public Schools will sponsor at least three CPR certification classes for all interested staff. In addition, each participant who successfully completes the course will be granted three PDPs. It's a three-hour class. We currently do four. I put three in there, saying that that should be what we're going for, but we are trying to do four. I just didn't want it listed in policy fully four, in case we couldn't meet that. It's not a requirement for school nurses to be instructors. However, we do have six CPR instructors amongst our staff. And so I'm asking that we also strike that each fall Quincy Public Schools will sponsor the CPR training program. It's outdated, and we're doing it throughout the school year to give them more and more opportunity. We're also offering it in the November professional development sessions. That's part of the plan going forward. We did it last, this fall, and it, like, filled up immediately, so we know there's a need for that. So those are my recommendations for that policy.
Any questions or comments on the amendments presented?
I just had one. So when you were saying three and four, meaning three courses offerings, you would like to have four, but three is in the...
I'd like to have three in the policy. We do offer four, but in the off-chance, we can't meet that fourth one, I'd like it to at least be in policy that there's three.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, seconded by Mrs. Cahill.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item.
Okay, so this is section 10.11, Student Health Services and Requirements. I believe you have a copy in front of you. In the areas that I have added in, which I will point out to you, on the first page, under the bulleted sections, we have an addition of, I can back up, so primary objective, and it lists what our primary objectives are. We're looking to add, activities may include identification of student health needs, health screening tests, including vision and hearing screening tests, communicable disease prevention and control. And it ends the addition section before the spot that says, for complete procedures, see Health Services Handbook. That's an addition, and that verbiage is from the MASK policy. That is online. Under Emergency Care at School, I'm looking to add, the school nurse is primary provider of emergency care. In the case of illness or injury, the parent or guardian will be contacted and asked to pick up the student. School personnel shall give only emergency care to students who become ill or injured on school property, buses, or while under school supervision. It continues with the next bullet. I don't know if you want me to read all of the sections that I'm adding? Is that something you'd like me to continue to do?
Yeah, you can read through it quickly.
Okay. So each year, parent guardians shall supply information indicating where the student is to be taken in case of an emergency, the name, address, and phone number of a family member, or other individual to be contacted in case the parent or guardian is not available, and any allergies or diseases the students may have. This verbiage is also from the MASK policy. I'm looking to add in, at the fourth bulleted point down from there, transportation of an ill or injured student is not normally to be provided by the school. If the parent or guardian cannot provide transportation and the student is ill or injured, an ambulance may be called. Expenses incurred as a result of emergency ambulance use will not be borne by the district. This is also verbiage from the MASK policy. And the one other addition is where it's underlined, that the person who accompanies a student that's being sent out to the ER could not be the school-assigned nurse, and that's so that the nurse remains on campus for the rest of the students.
Any questions or comments? Mrs. Lebo.
I have a question on the bottom of the page where you took, the school personnel shall give only emergency care to students who become ill or injured on school property, buses, or while under school supervision. What about walking to or from school? What about walking to school?
Well, there's no school personnel with that child if they're walking.
What if there was a fight on the way, in the neighborhood, on the way to the school, and the kid came in with a nosebleed?
Then they're on school property. You take care of them.
So when the incident happened, they were on school property. It says who become ill or injured on school property. So I think even on the way to school, we should...
Yeah. The verbiage is exactly from the MASK section, so I just pulled it exactly over. We can edit or change it.
I know this happens, though.
It does, quite often.
Can you say, or when they were, or when they arrive on school property?
When they arrive.
Oh, when they arrive. That was, why did I say that?
Sure.
Ill or injured.
And I have another question, too.
On or when they arrive on school property?
Okay.
So do we...
So to and from, my understanding is to and from school, walking is considered under.
If they leave school, and the nurse is going, and I can't see the nurse being able to do anything for them, you're not going to hang around to make sure they're safe home. But certainly on the way to school.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's critical, though, that it's when they arrive, because that personnel is at the school site.
Right.
But they're considered to be under school supervision during that time. We're responsible for students when they're walking to school, and then when they're also going home. So they are still considered to be falling under the umbrella of under school supervision.
Yeah, I think, I think just because once they get on the school property, we're not going to say, we're not going to help you.
Thank you.
And on the next page, the, what about the absence of the school, or is the principal or person designated to assume the responsibility? Do we ever have, do we have substitute nurses?
We do have substitute nurses.
Do we ever have a time when the school has no coverage?
In my time here, no.
Hmm?
No.
We haven't?
No.
Good, good job.
That's, that's the goal.
The next underlying thing, I really, really understand the need for that, but once I called an ambulance on, for a student, and the cost to the parents was prohibitive.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what to do about that. I, I, I mean, it would be, it would be horrible for the school system, too, but some people just don't have the insurance.
Right.
And, you know, I'm here, a parent was screaming at me because I called an ambulance, and the kid needed to go to the hospital.
Right. And that's why we rely, and I know our nurses don't just call 911, like, as a backup, so definitely...
It's just, it's just an unfortunate thing that's in our system.
Agreed.
And that's all I have for that one.
Mrs. Cahill, do you have a comment or question?
Yes. So if, so school personnel, when, when we say school personnel, do we identify, you know, if someone's in my class and they get hurt and they get cut or something? Do we, is there a particular personnel? Would it be just the nurse? I mean, am I, as a, as a teacher, am I going to be able to, like, you know, wrap them up and give them some kind of a medical attention, or am I just going to be calling the school nurse, whoever is designated in the building?
Typically, when it's during the school day, it's the school nurse is always used, you know, they, they'll send them to the nurse, they'll... But if they're, let's say, the teacher takes them on a field trip, and there is no nurse, that, you know, they're given a first aid bag, they're given the nurse's contact information to call if they need them, but in that case, you would be, you know, asked to give the child a Band-Aid if they scraped their knee, and then the nurse could see them when they returned back to school.
So what do we do if a student's hurt at practice? If there was a coach there? How, how does that get addressed? Do they...
So the coaches should be doing some first aid at the high school level. They have the athletic trainers.
Mm-hmm. And then if they need, let's say, I'm, I'm on the football field and my student gets hurt, do we call some, a nurse or someone, or do we just call if they have to be taken 911?
We typically utilize EMS. We typically utilize the EMS services if necessary.
Okay. And then, and then also students that are, so two, a couple of things. The one about the ambulance, and I think to your point at the beginning of this section, is we have to really be diligent in asking for other contacts that, you know, in case, you know, two or three or whatever, if we, if someone feels like they're not going to be able to be contacted because of their work situation or whatever. So I think that's important. And then, and then we also give permission for, if I'm, I don't know if I'm correct here, but when students come into the system, do we have, like, permission slips for EpiPens or any, you know, that someone in the school can administer, like, these kinds of medications?
Yeah, so we have some standing orders that are, Dr. Shiner from Manette writes our standing orders, and then parents sign off on an updated health emergency form every school year for us, and that typically lists what we use for emergency medicines, and then it also, they can sign permission for things like Tylenol or Motrin or Tums.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yep.
Motion to accept.
Can I just ask the Superintendent, so, Mr. Superintendent, do we have to accept Mrs. Lebo's amendment first that includes, or when they arrive on property? Yes. Okay. So I'd like a motion to accept, Mrs. Lebo, to make that motion, seconded by Mrs. Cahill. This is, or when they arrive on property?
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and a motion to accept as amended?
Motion to accept as amended.
Second.
Mrs. Lebo? Yep. Seconded by Mrs. Cahill.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Moving on. 10.11.1, Physical Examinations.
Yes. So under physical examination of students, the language was just a little bit outdated, so I pulled over the MASK language to use. It says, every student will provide evidence of a general physical examination that was done within the last 12 months in these four times, before entering school, so that's like before enrolling and, and being given admission, upon admittance to the fourth grade, seventh grade, and 10th grades. A record of all examinations and recommendations will be kept in the electronic health record. So we currently use SNAP for that. Every student will be examined for screening in vision, hearing, postural, and height/weight measurement as provided in the law and regulation. So that's regulated by Department of Public Health. Okay? And then there is a section about athletics in this policy, and we're looking to strike, And we're looking to strike, students who meet the criteria at the start of the season will remain eligible for the season. And the reason being is that's an MIAA rule change. It's Rule 56. And when the physical expires, they need a new physical to continue to participate. So that's what they've been following and this would just update our policy. We also did add in that the verbiage licensed physician, physician assistant, or nurse practitioner licensed to practice in the state of Massachusetts. When a physical expires within an athletic season, the student is required to obtain a new physical in order to continue to participate. I did strike out, the physical exams are available on scheduled dates from the school physician during the school year. We have not had scheduled school physicals in many, many, many years. If we have a student who is requiring a physical, we do have the ability to reach out to Dr. Shiner and set that up. A lot of that went by the wayside when we adopted everyone needing like insurance in Massachusetts and, and having the physicals. So there is still a way for them to get a physical, but we don't do it on a scheduled basis. And I think I had a strikeout of see Health Services Manual for further procedures in protocol. And that can either remain, I think I mistakenly striked that out because we do still have some information in our Health Services Manual about physicals and athletics.
So leave that in.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Mrs. Lebo.
At the top of the page, the second, the second group of, the second comment, every student will be examined for screening and vision, hearing. I would like that to say, every student will be examined by school personnel or by the nurse, by the school nurse. Because we've had issues with that in the past. We want to make sure that it's our people in the room doing that screening and not a student nurse. So I would like that added in somehow.
By the school nurse?
Do you not, we have our student nurses who work with us, who are required to take the BU Shield training before I allow them to do any kind of screening with our school nurses.
So, yes, but I want the school nurse there.
Absolutely.
So I wanted to say that because that was not necessarily happening before.
Okay. It is under me, so.
I'm glad.
So, also we need that language. We'll need the-
Every student will be examined by school personnel. Is that a good thing to say, school personnel? Or should I say by the school nurse?
How about properly trained school personnel? Because they do have to take that.
Okay, by properly trained school personnel.
So that's a, you're putting that in the form of a motion?
I am.
Second.
So what, so, but meaning properly trained school personnel? But the student nurse has to be with the properly trained-
The student nurse can go in if there's a student nurse there, but the student nurse can't go in and do it themselves.
They have to be with the properly trained-
Personnel.
Personnel. Okay.
Yes.
Can we say by or under the supervision of properly trained?
Well, we're not mentioning the student nurses at all.
Oh, okay.
We're not going to say, we're not going to bring them up. We're just going to say, as long as the nurse is in the room, I don't care.
By a properly trained school nurse, or school personnel? Is that the, is that the motion?
So only the nurses are trained for that, right?
By properly trained school personnel. So nurses are trained in all of these screenings. PE teachers can also be trained in the postural screenings and the height and weight measurements.
So the motion is properly trained school personnel?
Just on that, I just, it sounds exclusionary. So like, in other words, no one else would be allowed in to assist. So if, under this language, if someone looked at that and a, what's the, the students that are supervised?
Correct.
Were a part of that, that would, this language would exclude that.
How did you say it?
So every student will be examined under the,
Under the supervision.
Every student will be examined by or under the supervision of properly trained school personnel.
I'm not sure that under the supervision means they're in the room with them though. Is it?
Or under the direct supervision?
Say it again.
Every student will be examined by or under the direct supervision of properly trained school personnel.
Direct? Is that sufficient, Mrs. Lebo?
I don't know. He's the lawyer.
What would you, I terminate, because you'll be basically bringing this back to your nurses.
I believe that should cover it because our school nurses are always in attendance and working with the student nurses. So I believe that would cover it by and under.
My amendment.
So-
But now you have to read.
Mrs. Lebo makes a motion by or under the direct supervision of properly trained school personnel, seconded by Mrs. Cahill.
Something else, the direction.
Seconded by Mrs. Cahill.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Do you have additional questions or comments? Do you have-
I have a question about the athletics and the physical exams. Does the athletics have their own policies in, in terms of like concussions and things like that? Is that something within our, pardon me?
It's together.
You do it, yeah.
Yeah, so the physical exam comes under this policy and then we work together on the concussion policy, which we've been working on
To update it.
To update that. That will be coming on a little bit later.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions if I could. The, so under athletics, it says the physical examination must be on file before the student can participate. And then it goes on to say basically, if, if it lapses during the season, essentially, you, you need to re-up it. So my question is, who tracks and notifies the parents that it will lapse in the midst of a season?
So that I believe this is how it works, that the parents go onto Family ID. They register through Family ID, they submit their physicals to the athletic trainers at the high school level. The middle school level, the nurses are taking them in. They are notified at that time when they're turning it in. This is a winter sport physical. It expires on such and such a date. You need to set up a new physical.
And who's, who does that?
School nurses.
School nurses do that.
Yep. And they do it in conjunction with the coaches and the athletic trainers at the high school.
And it, and the physical is due upon expiration, proof of physical?
Correct.
Expiration of the physical. And what are the consequences of not receiving that? And how is that communicated to the parent or student?
Okay, so usually that's communicated by the athletic trainers or the coaches. The reason being, it's, it's an MIAA rule. We follow MIAA rules in the high school and the middle school models those rules so that they're aware of it all the way through. That's what this language does, is it just reflects the MIAA rule.
And that, who, who does the notification need not be written in here? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think that's more procedural.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
A motion to accept as amended, seconded by Mrs. Cahill.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Accepted. We move on to immunization of students, section 10.11.2.
And after reviewing that, I'm not recommending any change. I believe the language that there is inclusive and it will cover any changes that come down. We have had a change with the Meninge cockle vaccine being added in, but I believe that's covered in here under such other communicable diseases as may be specified from time to time by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. So no change.
Do we have to take a vote on that?
No, it's existing, correct?
Okay.
So no change.
Exists as is.
That stays as is.
Thank you. Very good. Moving on to communicable diseases.
Okay, so also recommending no change as this was updated during COVID multiple times and it is okay the way it stands.
Questions or comments on that?
Nope.
Okay. You have one? Mrs. Lebo.
So there's no mention of COVID in here at all anymore. There's no, good. No other questions.
All right. We'll keep that intact. Section 10.11.4, administering medication to students.
Okay. So with this one here, I have looked over the mask policy. I really would like to substitute the mask policy if possible for our policy and bring a lot of this into a procedure. A lot of it states on what we do when the medicine comes into the school, how the nurse does it, what the nurse is responsible for, what the parents are responsible for. It breaks down, you know, the non-prescription medication, medication delegation. All of that is covered in the mask policy.
So it's a page, could you just read it for the people watching at home?
The, read the mask policy?
Well, the policy that you want us to adopt.
The one, okay. So the mask policy-
And it's a substitute.
It's a substitute. It's administering medicines to students. Medications may not be administered to students while at school unless such medicine is given to them by the school nurse acting under specific written requests of the parent guardian and under the written directive of the student's personal physician. It does say, see below for exceptions, and I'll read those shortly. If a student has been approved for self-administration, a student who needs medication during the school day may be reminded to take the medicine by the school nurse or other individual designated by the school nurse in the student's medical administration plan. This provision only applies when the school nurse has a medical administration plan in place for the student. No one but the school nurse and those others, and those others listed in the medical administration plan acting within the above restriction may give any medicine to this, to any student. The exceptions are, the school district shall, through the district nurse leader, register with the Department of Public Health and train personnel in the use of epinephrine auto-injectors. The school district may, in conjunction with the school physician and the school nurse leader, stock nasal naloxone or Narcan. And trained medical personnel and first responders may administer nasal naloxone to individuals experiencing a life-threatening opiate overdose in a school setting. If the school district wishes medical personnel to train non-medical staff in the administration of nasal naloxone, the school committee shall vote to approve such training and the superintendent shall ensure that medical personnel have a written protocol which complies with medical directives and regulations from the Department of Public Health. Following consultation with the school nurse, students who fall into the following exceptions may self-administer medications. Students with asthma or other respiratory diseases may possess and administer prescription inhalers. Students with cystic fibrosis may possess and administer prescription enzyme supplements. Students with diabetes may possess and administer glucose monitoring tests and insulin delivery systems. Students with life-threatening allergies may possess and administer epinephrine. And so this is the mask policy that is on the school committee website.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Lebo.
I'm a little concerned that they don't say what age the students can do that.
Yeah, it, it's written in the law about them carrying it, so it's going against their civil rights if you're stopping them from carrying it. We are putting in place things like, you know, if your student is carrying this, we need to know about it. We need to know where it's being kept. And we, as nurses, do some teaching with the student. Say, you know, when I was at Snug Harbor, I had a fourth grader who, you know, they adamantly wanted that inhaler with the child at all times. We went through some intensive training with that, never had an issue.
Okay. So, and plus, like with, with, when the students have an EpiPen or an inhaler or any of these other medications, do we have that specifically written in a medical plan for them?
In the medical plan. We have a medical plan for the students.
If they're, if they were a certain age, we would already know that they're permitted to have that, right?
Well, what I mean, if, if, the way it's written, a kindergarten, you're carrying around an EpiPen.
I mean, if the parent, I mean, is that a case where if the parent said, I want my kindergarten-
I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not-
I don't know, I'm asking. I'm just curious of, of how that works, you know?
It's tough because that's how the law is written. So it's, you know, I can't debate the law.
Yeah.
Is there any, any additional questions, comments? Motion to substitute?
Motion to substitute.
Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Cahill.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo? Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I think that covers all of it. We appreciate your time tonight.
Your work.
And all of the good work, yep. And we will stand adjourned. Thank you.